Okay, all right, let's call this work session on February 19th at 4:00 PM to order please. We're here to discuss February 22nd, the board meeting packet that everybody has. Mitch, I guess like as we've been doing in the past, wow, Jeremy, new backdrop.
Hey, you like that? I grabbed it off of our header from the website.
You got permission to use that, Jeremy?
I hope so. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I like the fall leaves, makes me feel better. Okay, so I think like what we've been doing so far is we've been just kind of going through the agenda. We have some minutes on there from February 5th. Anybody notice, I have a couple of things, I mean, I just literally, I'll be quite honest, reviewed the packet a few minutes ago, so.
I haven't had a chance to look at the minutes yet.
Okay.
We can move on then. I mean, because you can always make those corrections on Monday.
Right, well, there's just a couple of things on that, yeah, right. I guess the February 8th one, the LOI on the Huron Shores Artisan, I know it wasn't Jamie that made the, that supported. It was either Mr. Westerbarth or Palmer or Cummings, but.
I think it was Bill.
Yeah, that's, I had a couple of corrections on these, if you want to just go through them real quick. I can do that. Yeah, on the Huron Shores Artisan, it was, I supported a motion by Mr. Spencer.
Okay.
Then the Asable Sewer Contract. Mr. Spencer supported a motion by myself.
All right.
And then the, down the, the last one on that page, the bathhouse improvements. Jamie supported a motion by me, purchase the new hot water heaters.
Okay, so McGuire and then Palmer. Okay, and like we discussed last time, any of these, you know, these things that we're catching now, Josh is going to have to do a revision and get them on, you know, uploaded on for the public as well, so that, and then get them to us, so that that's what we're acting on on Monday.
Right.
I mean, again, that's not to say that if somebody else doesn't find something, you know, over the weekend and whatever, we can't discuss it on. Great. The only other, the thing I had under consent agenda on that one was, or I felt anyways, that when we were talking about the contracting, the contractor for those water lines that were damaged on F-41, I thought that we just indicated that the contractor is being billed for that. We have contractor is paying for damage, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, obviously, we're optimistic that he will be paying, but, and we're billing for it, but I think that we just need to put contract as being billed for damage at this point.
Do you have an amount on that, Ann?
I, I, I think we do, Mitch, don't we?
Yeah, but not offhand, no.
Right, not offhand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious what, if that included the cost of the water, because I understand it was.
Yes, it will.
Okay, all right.
Okay, sorry, I just have another participant to add, I don't know if it's Tim or not. Does anybody know if a 419 number would be Tim?
That's probably Todd.
Oh, that is Todd, okay. All right, I'm gonna see. Let me just see who it is real quick to see if it's Todd or Tim.
Mr. Cummings' number, the one that I have anyway, ends in 22.
Okay, is that Todd, did I just unmute you? 41, 419, phone number 419-309-7708.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, yeah, I'm on the 419.
Okay, so that's Todd, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I just got a text from Tim. He's tied up till 4:30, he'll jump on as soon as he can.
Okay, all righty, I'll watch for him to pop up. Okay.
It'll all be done by 4:30.
Yeah, right, if we shut up on these meeting minutes, right? Okay.
Keep rolling.
The only other, I guess, the other thing I had, wait, I'm sorry, that's, where are we? Oh, I jumped to February. Oh yeah, we are in the February. We had those two things, on, under resolutions and ordinances for recreational marijuana, we, it says in here, to approve moving forward with adult-use recreational marijuana being added to the current ordinance. I guess my thought was, is that we're asking the Planning Commission to draft an ordinance? I mean, how does, you know, I feel like that kind of states like we're.
We're asking them to draft an ordinance to send to the board, yes.
Right. So I think that needs to be reworked a little bit. Do you guys agree, or?
Yeah.
Okay, because to me, it sounds like we're, you know, we're moving forward. So, just even moving forward with adult, to something about drafting, I guess, but I can get with.
Depends what the motion was actually.
Right, well, I know it was to draft, not to approve, but, so we'll have to listen back. And then also under Planning Commission appointments. It was not all yeas, Mr. Cummings voted no, under John Miners. So. But that's all I had on those. Okay, then next would be, we got some bills, payment of bills prepaid and check run, any questions there?
Yeah, I just had a couple, just a couple of questions. There's, there's several payments on here, they're showing copier printer, and the payments are made to Wells Fargo. I don't quite understand that, the vendor was Image Business Solutions, I thought.
They are having us pay directly to Wells Fargo, that's who the leases are through, that's what was, that's what I was told by Tammy.
Oh, so they, also the vendor set it up to pay to Wells Fargo?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that, that make, okay, that makes sense, and then there was under unallocated, page 14, there was BSNA software for timesheets, is that, is that new software, or is that just an upgrade, or? $2,251?
Mitch, do you know anything about that? Let me grab the bill out of the basket real quick, if Mitch wants to speak to that.
It doesn't come to mind, but.
Because I, I know we were getting some BS off where I just.
Jamie, is that you ringing?
Yeah, sorry, I'm all by myself.
I'm just asking.
Well, in timesheets, it would be for the clerk's office, do you know anything about it, Josh?
No, I do not.
It looks like here's, I got the bill and emailed Mitch and Tammy on 2/8. Timesheet system, annual service and support per contract, and BSNA online employee web portal, annual, so it's annual, it looks like annual support.
Yes.
For the timesheets.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's not new software, that's just an annual cost?
That's housekeeping.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, housekeeping stuff, um, because of the web port hole, I think, because like all the department heads couldn't log in from different areas and put the employees' information through there, so that's part of it. So that's the annual cost that they have to pay.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just one, one other, one other comment on the payment bills. We have included in the payment of bills, all the payments for the municipal underwriters for the Michigan Township Power Plan. And one of the, the first item under the superintendent's report is to approve the payment, so if, if we approve the payment of bills, then I guess we won't need to approve the power plan bill.
I thought that because of the amount of the money, and if anybody had any question about the type of coverage that we had, that it had to be approved by the board. I think that it actually should have been approved by the board, it then listed as a prepaid for the next meeting, but it was, it got entered before it went to the board. I could be wrong, but like how we do Blue Cross Blue Shield on an annual basis, if there's an increase, we usually include that on the board packet for the board to ask questions about the coverage.
Right.
And it's $71,000, so I would think that they would want to at least take a look at it.
Well, you can, you can look through the payment of bills, I added them all up, and it does add up to $71,300. If, if you feel like it should be approved, maybe we can, I don't know how we would do that, change the agenda to approve that power plan, and then approve the payment of bills, or?
That's fine.
Or you could approve the payment of bill excluding that one, and keep, and just approve it at that point in the meeting.
Okay, that, that probably would make more sense. Okay, that was all I had, thanks.
You're welcome.
So we would just deduct that, is it, the $71,000 is in the check run? So it's only like 20 some?
$71,300 is in the check run.
Right, so the February.
Josh entered it, Josh entered it before it came to the board, but that's because he didn't know it had to go to the board first.
Right.
Yeah.
So will we, okay.
So once we approve, under, under superintendent report, once we approve the power plan, then, then Jamie can go ahead and make those payments, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I do recommend we do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Jamie, what's a pocket wall mount moistener?
It's two different things, by the way.
Okay.
It's a little pocket for documents, and we hung them on the wall, like outside of, we did one outside the treasurer's door, so that if they didn't want to come in the office, they can leave their stuff, kind of like what Tammy's got on their door in the clerk's office.
Gotcha.
And then we put them on the wall up here, and the other stuff is moisture, like for, like right now, this time of year, my fingers, our fingers are really dry from the paper, so it's like you rub your hand on it, and it kind of makes those hands a little sticky, so you can like rifle through the papers, or flip checks over when you're adding them up, that type of thing.
Like that little tub of pink, pink gel goo stuff, I got you, okay.
Yeah, so nobody's licking their finger.
Hey.
Anymore.
Not in COVID, no, no, there will be no licking of fingers.
Nope.
I was wondering who was going to ask that question.
I just jumped out at me like, moistener, what? Wall hanging moistener, that's, that's quite the deal there, huh?
All the sticky issues.
Exciting stuff here in the township hall.
Indeed.
Yeah. Cool place to hang out, okay, so we're made it, we made it through the finance section, right? A subcommittee updates are going to be, you know, given at the board. And then we have superintendent's report, we just talked about the power plan, row 2020 invoices.
Yeah, and, and I think what I put in my, in my narrative, I think that discussion needs to be had with that. About, you know, hitting us this time of year, we're literally trying to close 2020 out. Not the best time to give us kind of a loose collection of various invoices for various projects, so while we may very well owe them the timing. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Rick talk about that, let him describe why we got those when we did.
Um, that's a topic maybe we need to have with all the department heads, too. It seems to be, I mean, it's, sometimes it's gotten better, sometimes it hasn't, but there has been several invoices that have gotten turned in late, and I know we were trying to curb that a little bit last year, and I'm still trying to wrap up a couple that I'm not getting cooperation with, so we have till next week to get them all posted, and then 2020 is shut.
What do you mean not getting cooperation?
Um, I'm not getting answers, and people haven't had time to get back to me about it, and I've sent several emails to several people, and.
Basically, we do collections.
It's a little frustrating.
Yes.
That would be extremely frustrating, yep, yep.
So yeah, so I'm hopeful that we'll get that one wrapped up by next week.
Okay. I, I don't know why I was taking the lead, it should be you, Mitch, but.
Oh.
Number three, very.
Number three, number three, you have that counter offer in your hand. And actually, with number four, you now have that revised. So I would call that now an LOI in your hand as well. You can contemplate those and act upon those accordingly on Monday. I'm not sure we really need to discuss them here, because we'd be getting into probably deliberative type issues more than what.
Does anybody need additional, I guess the, the point, my thought is, the point of this, is having this pre-board meeting, is if anybody would like any additional information brought to them before Monday night, now's the time to say that you, you need it, so, yeah. I mean, this is what's in the packet, if you need something more than that, then you need to get with Mitch or I to, to get supplemental information before Monday night, that can be included in the packet and for the public as well.
Yeah, I would just point out that the, that the, the second offer kind of has some of the things that we talked about in the meeting yesterday that we want to have in an offer, so I thought that was kind of a good thing to to have as part of that.
Well, I think, yeah.
You know, we talked about showing the, you know, availability of funds and assigned, assigned document and all those kinds of things, so this, you know, has that, so.
Okay.
Uh, the next one would be the Freedman listing agreement revision. I think that's kind of self-explanatory as well. Obviously, we need to make that correction, because it was a error, and it was asked initially, so this will clear up that clerical error and set it correctly to what the actual motion was, when it was acted upon originally by the prior.
Yeah, I, I would agree, just one, one correction I think needs to be made. The legal description, which they include in Exhibit A, I don't believe is correct for the subject property.
And how does that work then for the offer that came, that didn't go through them? I mean, obviously, we're still under a listing agreement, so we still owe them a commission, that they didn't facilitate anything on, if the board chooses to go in that direction.
I would think so.
If it's inactive, yeah, I would think so.
But perhaps by Monday night, Mitch, you could have them send a corrected legal description for the property to be part of the agreement?
Can do so. It was the attachment A. Next is the approval for Old Orchard Park Shoreline Erosion Project, kind of revisit it. Because we did not get the amount of grant funding that was anticipated, and with the bids that had been placed, decision's been made to split this project in two phases. And Rick Freeman will have all that, as far as details, numbers, and things of that nature. So I'm going to ask that, if you listen to what he's presenting, then I could ask to approve that, so please put it into a phased process and budget of two years, instead of a, an attempt to make a large-scale budget amendment to try to cover this. And then the next item is the EIC Township Board Work Session Potential Action Item. I put this in there just in case things came out of the, the meeting yesterday. And so I'm, I'm just going to leave that there, and then we want to talk about something on Monday, based upon all of that discussion, and you've had, well, Steve had maybe roughly 24 hours only to just kind of think about everything that was said and discussed. You want to bring something up at that point on Monday, based upon that, I think this would be a good place.
Well, what, I mean, I know we couldn't act during the work session yesterday, but the only action items that we indicated follow-up were criteria for what would all be involved in an LOI, and then a revision, or a, you know, an update, I guess, on township properties, including a map.
Right, and I, I think what we ought to do Monday is memorialize that by some type of a motion, that that's what we're asking be done. That way, it, it wasn't a decision that came out of a work session, it was a decision that got now rendered in an active board meeting.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, you just, we, we don't want to accidentally get ourselves in trouble.
Right, no, I hear you, that's why I just was wondering, you know.
Yep, and then.
What else there would be?
Yeah, then the next item is the heating and cooling at the treasurer's office, and so this, my understanding, this is kind of a longstanding issue. And the only real rectifying action we've been able to take using space heaters. And what I would like to propose is basically look at a unit, be placed inside the, the office with heat and cool that space, and not attempt to try to change or adjust the existing HVAC system, or buy a new HVAC system, because we don't know what our game plan is long-term for the building in the future, whether we renovate or do something else.
I agree.
So I gave you an illustration of a wall unit, that obviously Jamie's office is on, he has one, two, his three exterior walls, kind of an unusual for, for, you know, office size, so we have plenty of locations, we could put something like this in, and not have to necessarily try to re-weak the existing HVAC system, which I would say is kind of precarious anyway. We seem to have lots of little issues with the, like, existing HVAC system, as far as it, it sometimes gets cold, it sometimes gets hot, and, you know, they, I, I don't want to say limp it along, but they've done lots of repairs even while I've been here. I don't know if I want to play with a huge new system with uncertainty of what this building features. This is the type of unit that you could place, and if, for whatever reason, let's, as an example, let's just say in the future that her office is demoed, that unit could be taken out and then repurposed somewhere else.
It's a great idea, how much are they?
You know, I've seen them, honestly, for a room that size, it might be like $1,500 to $1,800, so.
And that's just for the unit cost, we'd also have to pay some installation.
For some install.
And do you have, I mean, would, do you have the, the, the model number and the square footage that it's going to cover, to ensure that we get one that's, that's going to cover that room?
I don't, but what I would ask, well, I would probably be asking the board on Monday, is give me the ability to move forward with that, and then we'll start looking at the hard cost and the correct sizing of a unit like that, as far as.
Do you actually need, do you need a motion from the board to go collect that information?
Well, unless.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get this done, I mean, it's freezing cold right now, and they're in the middle of it, and if we, if we try to let, like, oh, well, let's wait three or four meetings to talk about it, well, by that time, it'll be hot again, and it won't, and it'll be a moot point. So I'm trying to, we're trying, I'm trying to get the, you know, get this going a little bit, the, I don't think the units are going to be too horribly expensive, and if you can do some legwork and find out, and maybe even get a quote on installing one of those for her and that office, that would be preferable.
Steve, I didn't hear what, I think it was you.
Don't you have an emergency up to $10,000?
I, I do, I just want some direction that, that you didn't want me to start playing with the master HVAC.
Correct, I think that you're absolutely right on that, I, unless anybody else disagrees. Playing with the master heating system is probably not, not what we're looking for, we just need to supplement it just a little bit in that office.
Right, and it was, in theory, supplemented with a similar, not like through the, it's a different unit, it's underneath the window over by Jane's desk, and that's a heating and cooling, but it's obviously not big enough for the whole room, so.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that's why.
Be better, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if he could go out and get the square footage and find out what unit's actually going to cover that.
Right.
Since there's already one of those in there, if we can get another one and put it on the other side of the, of the room, if the two of them would be able to supplement, you know.
You would think so.
You would think, but you know, I'm not an HVAC guy, so.
Well, and I think the one that she has is probably well-dated, too, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
It's at least five years old, I think.
So unless, again, unless the board has some thought about the master super system, that's, that's the direction I'm wanting.
I'm sure we'll get to that when we start talking about Township Hall stuff, but I don't think we're quite ready for that yet, so if we can get something that as a stopgap, that's not going to break the bank, that's going to make it so Jamie's fingers and lips aren't blue, that would be appreciated by all parties, I'm sure. Yeah, bet.
It's hard to, it's hard to work with gloves on.
Yeah, whatever. And you'll save, you'll save money on the sticky, you can wear gloves instead of the sticky stuff, right?
And I can tell you, as the old firefighter, that this, space heaters are the number-one reason house fires, structure fires this time of year, and most of it is due to the fact, and I'm not saying we're doing it, but there's a tendency, the heat isn't exactly where I want it, and the plug's too far away, I'll plug it into a power strip, or I'll plug it into an extension cord, and those things aren't meant to, for that type of draw, and that's where the fire starts, and so it becomes an electrical fire, and then, you know, half the building's gone. So I, I'm looking at this, not only to, if you will, to keep people warm, but also.
Awesome.
Okay, so I guess we're at Resolution 2103, Commitment of Funds IET. Question.
Yeah, I, I think the amount you have at the bottom of that is incorrect. Township had committed $200,000 to Phase 3 project.
Well, do you have a page number, I'm trying to pan down and find it, so.
92.
Forgive me, thank you.
Just, all right.
We will, we will check that and firm.
Yeah, we had, we had committed $100,000 in the beginning, and then a year or two later, we committed another $100,000, and about the time of the first one was when we got the county to commit $50,000 to the Phase 3 project.
I think it's $300,000 total. And not the 260. Correct?
I saw it on the thing.
So you're saying, Bill, that be it further resolved that the Osco to Township, or the Charter Township of Osco to commits to providing a total of $161,000, you're saying that's supposed to be 200?
Yes.
$200,000, not $160,000.
And this is only for the engineering cost of this, of the, of the trail, right?
No, this is for matching funds for the the TAP grants, and the other grants that we're, we're getting to fund this project. Okay. We, we have the TAP grant, TAP grants, and I, I don't have my numbers right here in front of me, but it's, you know, in the millions of dollars, but there's matching funds that. Uh, but there's matching funds that, that, uh, Row is working on, uh, getting. And Rick will probably talk about that Monday night, but the township had committed two hundred thousand, uh, to this Phase Three part of the, uh, IET back a number of years ago. And there's also fifty thousand that's included, not in the two hundred thousand, but in the, in the, in the monies that we are putting together for matching funds from the county of fifty thousand, because, uh, and that all came about when we, we, we agreed, had to get the lawyers together and we agreed to contribute fifty thousand to Phase One in Asable. And since none of, the, the pipe, the path was changed, it was supposed to go over the River Road Bridge, which would put it starting out in us, in Oscoda, so we were gonna contribute fifty thousand. Uh, when it, when they changed to Mill Street, uh, now, none of Phase One is in Oscoda Township. Oh, we, by law, we couldn't contribute fifty thousand unless we got something in return. And so the agreement was, we would contribute that fifty thousand to Asable Phase One. And the county would contribute fifty thousand, uh, to Phase Three on, for our part, so that's, that's how that all came about and we had originally, uh, con- committed a hundred thousand, then we increased it by another hundred thousand a year or two later to make it a total of two hundred thousand, the township was committing to Phase Three of the bike.
Cool.
Great, I'll just check on that.
And I think Rick Freeman has, has all that information, or Doug Schultz, probably. He has that all listed out, what the, what the amounts are for different, all the different fundings.
Right, although I like one sixty-one better, just saying, but.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that wouldn't give us enough to, uh, make the matches.
I'm kidding.
We'd, we'd lose a million and a half bucks if we do that.
We don't wanna do that.
Great. Now I just lost the agenda in my stack.
Now we're at Planning Commission Annual Update.
Okay.
I think that'll be obviously presented and talked about at the meeting.
Is Eric gonna come up, is Eric, I mean, are we having Eric on to give anything there, or is Bill gonna, or do we need to? Or just that, that, we're just getting the annual update?
I'm not, it's, it's an update that, you know, the, the zoning administrator does every year, uh, usually he attended, would be at the meeting, so if you have questions about anything.
Okay.
Yep.
They would kinda framework it and walk everyone through it.
Yeah, kinda, kinda similar to what, what Todd will be doing with, with his, with his report.
Okay.
Is there a reason why it's under resolutions and ordinances?
Oh. I don't know.
Yeah, it really should be under other, probably.
Yeah.
Be up at the report line.
Either, yeah, either in the report line or in, in under other, one of the two, I guess.
Yeah.
You want, you want, I can move it to the report line if that would be for-
Yep, that would probably be better.
Right.
Read after Todd does his report.
Okay.
Because it doesn't need action, correct?
No.
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 Right, so under the subcommittee reports and project updates, so number four, move it to there.
Okay.
And then we have closure of construction account.
This is just asking permission from the board, it's just a housekeeping thing to close out the Phase One checking account. With all the different grant monies and stuff that we get with USDA, there, we are required to have separate checking accounts for each one of the phases for the water main extensions that we have or any type of grant funding that we get. So this is just the formality, Todd's, or Troy's just letting us know, it's okay, we finished our paperwork and we're all good, um, to close it out, and so now I'm just asking the board's permission to close the checking account out.
Didn't we already do that, Jamie?
That was Phase Two.
Oh, Phase Two, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Oh, I would've thought we'd have closed Phase One before we closed Phase Two, but okay.
We have that, um, MacArthur.
With MacArthur's lawsuit, we had to wait till that was all final, we had some paperwork from MacArthur before we could do that.
Yeah, well, and then we had some extended work that had to be done on the Phase One, that's right.
Yeah. So we're happy to get it closed finally.
Yes, so we can start another one.
Yes.
And that's, oh, that-
We're getting good at this.
That reminded me of something, Mitch, if, if, if you talk to, uh, Rick, uh, Freeman from Row, uh, if I, I was trying to find, I have a, uh, a map that shows all the different, uh, water main extensions that were proposed. Um, I couldn't find my copy, I, I know it's here somewhere. But maybe for benefit of the, of the new board members, if, if he could, uh, get us a copy of that map that shows where all the future extensions will be. I think that would be helpful for every, everyone to have an understanding of, of where these extensions are gonna be.
He, I, I actually got a copy of that, um, just a couple of weeks ago when we were talking to, um, uh, Liquid Shores, you know, on, um, their changeover and everything there, so I can forward that to everybody. He sent it to me.
Yeah, I, that, he, that was sent out, we've had that, I don't know, the middle of last year or maybe before that, but I have, I had a, I have a copy of it somewhere in this stack of papers that I have all over my office, but I couldn't find it, so I thought maybe some of the new board members would wanna see what that, that's our, that's our plan over the next, what? Four, five, six years of water main extensions.
Right, the, the one I have just says future phase, I'm sorry, I'm turning my head and looking at the wall. You know, it has, uh, a color-coded phase H, you know, or A through H, um, project location, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I will forward that right after we finish.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, well, it's four forty.
Woo-hoo!
And, uh, yeah, there's nothing else on the agenda.
That was fast, this is crazy, Chuck, we're missing, I can feel it, we're missing something, I just know it.
Yeah, well.
Public comment.
Huh?
Public comment.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I, I didn't close up shop yet, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Tim, um, Tim has zoomed in, uh, um, Tim, did you have any, sorry?
No, 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 we're good, thank you very much.
Okay, um, okay, so are we ready to move to public comment? I think we have one public, well, two public here, but. Or does anyone else have anything else? Nope, nope, okay, public comment then, I am going to see if Dave or Greg have anything to say or ask. He asked both of them to unmute. So. Greg, did you have anything to add?
I have no comments.
Okay, well, thanks for attending.
Thank you.
Alright, and Dave, Eiler, did you have anything to, any questions or anything?
Nope, thank you though.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well, with that, um, I make a motion to adjourn at four forty-one.
So moved.
Okay, have a great weekend, everybody.
See you later.
Good job, everybody.
Yep.